Thank you very much. This meeting of the Maua Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may view so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 869-8579-1432, and the required password is 484996. We'll call Mr. Licker. Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Cohn.
Here.
Ms. Dabonaro.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
And student representative Edward Kane.
Here.
Adherent notice of agenda, this meeting is provided to the original news and the records specifying that the Maua Board of Education will meet on March 29, 2023, in the administrative office's 60 Ridge Road, Maua, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Please rise for a salute to the flag. Mr. Gallo, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will be having our executive close session at the end of the meeting tonight, so we're moving on to Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position within the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Now please have a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Gallo. We are now open to the public for Agenda questions.
Hello, Theodore, one hour and a place. I have a question about Agenda Letter V, therapeutic health services. Just looking for clarification. It seems like a big amount, $436,000. Just looking for clarification on what it's for.
Dr. Theodore, you said V?
V, V is a big one. Sorry.
You said it's an ESS contract.
Yeah, contract therapeutic health services. Just looking for an explanation for what it is. I would have emailed earlier. I didn't get it until today, so.
No, I appreciate the question. This is a service that we provide to our students at the secondary level, six through 12. There are, there is a population of students who need more intensive support to navigate socially, emotionally, outside of what our guidance counselors can provide. This support not only works with the individual student in the school setting, they also work with the families and with the parents. They also do groups, group sessions with the families outside of school, and they help them navigate the school academically as well. So, to be quite honest, when you think of the Special Ed Child Study Team and those supports, this is a different, this is away from that, but this is a very intensive support for our students who need us the most. The rough numbers, we have probably about between 28 and 30 students who receive this support along lines, as well as their families.
And you said six through 12?
Six through 12.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is this only related to Agenda? This section afterwards is open, right?
So, Mark, I got a motion to close the meeting as well. Ms. Cohn, Dr. Gallo. All right, Dr. Turo, superintendent.
I have three brief things to talk about. There are wonderful things happening throughout the district, and we've been trying to spotlight them each and every meeting. I was invited by Mrs. Khan and Ms. Anlani to the first, Maua's first crescent lighting. That was last Friday. It was in celebration of Ramadan. They invited various community members to come and take part in this experience. A number of our community members were able to speak. The mayor, the mayor was there. I think the county sheriff, he spoke as well. I was able to speak on behalf of the district, really celebrating the wonderful things that are happening here in Maua, and celebrating our students and the work that they're doing here in school. And it was topped off with a couple of Maua students singing "The Star Spangled Banner" and "America the Beautiful." It was a really nice community event, but a number of different parties came together to celebrate and to learn, and that took place last Friday, and I just want to thank Mrs. Khan for welcoming us to that event. Oftentimes, we talk about the high school awards and accomplishments. This is an opportunity to talk about Joyce Kilmer School. Our Joyce Kilmer School Project Challenge students competed in mock trial against 91 other teams. They placed second out of 91 teams. They are going to Rutgers University in the coming weeks to present their case in front of a judge and a jury. What I also found out is that those cases are also used in the law school with the law students along the lines of dissecting different scenarios, work that's done, work that was generated to come up with a conclusion. So, it's definitely a point of pride. Rampou Ridge also took part in this experience for our Project Challenge students. They competed, I believe, against 83 teams. They also took second place, so they will be going down to Rutgers University to compete at that level. Kyle, just to let you know, I asked if they could share a bus for the fiscal ramifications of that, and we're working on that as well. So, we are really proud of our Project Challenge students. It's a lot of work preparing for these events and presenting it in front of a committee, and to have our fourth graders get second place out of 91, and our eighth graders at Rampou Ridge get second place out of 83 is a great accomplishment for our students here. So, those are the three things that I wanted to share.
Thank you very much. Mr. Licker?
Yeah, buddy, if you want one, thank you.
Tonight is the second presentation for the Plenary Budget for the 2324 school year. A recap of the budget calendar that we're going to follow for the presentation for this year is at our last meeting on March 8th. We spoke regarding the review of the revenue sources, tax impact, enrollment, and we also spoke about debt service and the impacts of that to our budget for next school year. For this evening, we're going to be discussing and highlighting the areas of special revenue, special education, operations, and capital projects. At our next meeting scheduled for April 19th, benefits, personnel, and transportation, that was added from the last, our last meeting, we are going to highlight some areas of transportation at the April 19th meeting. And then on May 3rd, we're going to have a summary adoption of the 2324 school year budget. Brief recap for our last meeting, as I had said, the Plenary Budget that was adopted at that meeting has been sent down to the county office. They're currently conducting their review on it. We hope to receive any feedback from them in the coming weeks, and we'll take care of any items that they request additional information for or additional backup for. Okay, getting started for this evening's areas of focus. First off is special revenue. We also commonly refer to it as Fund 20. That's a fund within our county software where special revenue funds are housed and maintained. These are all funds that we receive for a dedicated purpose from another entity, such as the federal government, the state of New Jersey, or for a local entity. Local entity, best example of that is Maua Schools Foundation, which is on our agenda this evening. Some of the awards and grants that they assign and allot to us, we account for and maintain in Fund 20. The federal grants that are the most popular, that are used year over year, are ESSA, that's formerly known as Title I, and IDEA. We'll touch base on a little bit of those on the next slide. And then non-public grants, those come from the state of New Jersey. Those are grants and funds that we receive, which we are the custodian for, but they're actually funds intended for some of the non-public schools within our township. The federal funds that I mentioned, IDEA and ESSA, formerly Title, the Title Funds, Title I, II, and III. That budget for next year is anticipated to be approximately $658,000. For the state non-public funds, and I highlighted the non-public schools within our township that do receive funding, it's Sage Day School, Young World, and Apple Montessori. They have collectively, across all three schools, a budget of $12,450 for next year. The total anticipated for next year for the 2324 for these areas is $670,450. We do typically, per the guidance from the county, we budget slightly less than what we have received this year, as part of how the county wants us to budget. Also, with the special revenue, I wanted to highlight some one-time grants that we've received. So, these are one-time grants that we receive from the federal government, all associated with the COVID pandemic. The first allocation, these are also commonly called or referred to as the ESAR funds. So, the CARES Act funding, which is ESAR I, the district received $171,000. Those funds have already been expended and spent. We were required to do that by September of 2020. The C RISPR funds are ESAR II. The district received $747,962. Those are funds that we have obligated to spend before September of '23. The vast majority of that went to one of our building projects to address HVAC systems and replacement at Joyce Kilmer School at 300 Way. We have the ARC ESAR funds, commonly known as ESAR III, $1,846,000 that we received. These are for various different areas. We have until September of 2024 to obligate and spend these funds, so a little more time with those. And then the last one is ARC IDEA. Those are funds specifically helped to augment the same areas as the regular IDEA funding that we receive year over year. Standing away from special revenue, I'm going to special education. The costs in the special education portion of our budget go through a couple of different areas. One is out-of-district special ed tuition. We have related insurance services that our students receive that are eligible for, speech, physical, and occupational, the ESS program that was mentioned a short time ago. Any one-to-one services are included in here. The general administration of the CST team and our case managers, preschool disabled program that we offer. The district does have self-contained classes for every level, through K through 12, our latest attendance report. We have 45 students that are enrolled in those self-contained programs throughout the K to 12 level. And the special education area represents approximately 20% of the budget for the 2324 year. The out-of-district costs that I did highlight, this is a combination of both for special ed and for public. We have about 114 students that are in a tuition-based school outside of Maua. Seventy of them are in a special ed setting, whether it's at a private school for the disabled, Burke County Special Services, or sometimes another public school that offers a program that's suitable for that student. We also have 44 regular ed students, and these are all high school age students who are attending Burke County Technical and Vocational Schools, or Burke County Academies, or any one of the Burke County schools where we do pay a tuition for the student to attend there. For the 2324 school year, a little bit under $6.5 million is what the budget is scheduled to be. The other area I wanted to touch on tonight is employee benefits. These are all contractual benefits that our employees have, whether it's through the MBA contract, or the administrative's contract, or other contractual areas. Social Security and workers' compensation is also included in this, this fund or this account, area of the budget, and also any employees who, through their contract, are eligible to receive payment of sick time when they retire. This is also where these funds are maintained. For the 2324 school year, this area represents about 14.2% of the budget, or a little bit over $10.5 million. The largest portion of that benefit area that I spoke about is the medical benefits that we offer our staff, our eligible staff. Those medical benefits are across three different areas. There's health, prescription, and dental. Health, we do have benefits through the state of New Jersey, through the school employees' Health Benefits Plan, or SEHBP. There was a significant increase for this calendar year. It's on a calendar year basis how this program is maintained, so from January through December. A very large increase. I did make some headlines in the late fall when it came out, 15.6% increase in premiums for this year. Employees do contribute and pay a portion into this, however. Prescription, we offer a private plan, so stepping away from the state plan for this. It's a private plan that we have directly between the district and Benicard. Our employees do contribute for prescription insurance as well. And for dental benefits, again, we offer a private plan. We have an agreement and contract directly between us, the district, and Delta Dental. Total budget for this medical portion, so this is within the amount I just mentioned on the previous slide, is $8,000, $8 million, excuse me, $222,000. Another area for this evening is just overall operations. So, operations consist of a lot of different areas, so this is where our school operations, school supplies, computers, devices, instructional technology, instructional curriculum, this is comprised of this, any professional development and guidance, our maintenance ground, so a lot of different areas are assembled here within the operations portion, and of course, extracurricular athletics also has dedicated areas and dedicated lines in the budget as well. Okay, capital projects. Capital projects, for this school year, there are no capital projects, or there are no dedicated withdrawals, I should say, from our capital reserve account within the 2324 budget, but that doesn't mean to say that we're not going to be doing anything. We have a couple of ongoing projects, and the district is always continuing to review and proactively look at the capital projects and see which ones are the most appropriate to invest our monies in, referencing, of course, is always our strategic plan, referencing some of the internal infrastructure replacement schedules that we've put together over the last couple of years for HVAC, and roofing, and paving, and also the land facility order that we completed about three years ago, four years ago now, three years, three years ago, referencing that as well to make sure we're still staying true to that. We're monitoring it, and we are addressing anything that may have been identified there as a potential project. To highlight some of the ongoing projects that we have currently going on, we have the grandstand replacements. That is moving forward well and on schedule. Material for the grandstand and the press box is expected middle to late April, and everything should be assembled pretty quickly afterwards, once it arrives on site, from what I've been shared, and the prep work, footings, and buildings underneath are all well underway, at or very near to completion. We have a track resurfacing project that is scheduled for this year as well. That's going to follow the spring sports season, starting right around late May, early June, with a, this can be a resurfacing of the track, so it's not a full replacement. They are going to first do some work on some of the drainage between the track and the turf field, correct some problem areas there, and then resurface the full track as well for the summer, with the schedules to be done well ahead of the fall sports season. We're wrapping up the very end of the exterior window and storefront replacement project. This touched several areas at Etsy Ross, George Washington School, and Rampou Ridge as well. And we also, two months ago in January, the board approved and awarded the project for replacement of HVAC and building automation systems at George Washington School. Another project that was approved prior year, but we have not made any commitments to award or anything as of yet, is HVAC and building automation project at Etsy Ross. Again, that's something that we still have at the ready to go, but we haven't given a firm date for when that project will occur just yet. And with that, that's the end of tonight's presentation on the budget. There is going to be two more, as I mentioned previously. April 19th, the benefits, personnel, transportation, and then a summary at the, at the end that the May 3rd gave, and adoption of the final budget for 2324. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
I have a report this evening. As you can see on the board agenda, Agenda items 18A through D, we have four retirements to announce, and then after we announce those retirements, we have one other additional item to highlight. So, the first, you'll see, our current assistant principal of Maua High School, Mrs. Linda Boney, has announced her retirement. Mrs. Boney started her career here in Maua as our mathematics, business, family, and consumer science industrial arts supervisor. She was mathematics supervisor of six through 12 for seven years, and spent the last 14 years as the assistant principal of the high school. She initiated our first robotics team in 2005. She is extremely knowledgeable about teaching and learning, and is attentive to the development of our teachers. She is a true problem solver, who looks at all perspectives and seeks to always do right by our kids. Linda has an incredible work ethic and the ability to follow through with every detail. Mr. Pascal, our current principal of Maua High School, has referenced Mrs. Boney as being an awesome partner over the years. Linda will continue teaching as an adjunct mathematics professor right here at Rampou College in her retirement, and will spend much deserved time with her grandchildren, and we wish her the very best in the years to come. Our second announcement is another staff member over at Maua High School, Mrs. Carol Farrell. Mrs. Farrell is a special education teacher over at the high school. She started her employment in the district at Rampou Ridge Middle School, however. After a one-year stay at Rampou Ridge, Carol arrived at Maua High School, where she has spent 19 years. Carol is a true educator, gifted reading specialist, and expert in differentiating for all types of student learners. She works tirelessly and willingly with students who need the most attention, and she takes them under her wing, guiding them towards success. Not only is Carol truly a team player, but her instruction is and has been strong throughout her time here in Maua. Mrs. Farrell also provides Orin Gillingham reading instruction to those students who need that reading assistance the most. Carol plans on starting her retirement traveling. We hope Carol uses her time to also do what she loves the most, which is, if you know Carol, she loves to hike and to ski. Third, we have Miss, or Dr. Rosemary Tenatilo. She is a gifted, self-contained teacher over at Joyce Kilmer School. She has just recently announced her retirement, hence the asterisk next to her resolution. We are proud to recognize Dr. Tenatilo for her unwavering commitment to Maua Township Public Schools and our students. We appreciate all that she has given to her students. Dr. Tenatilo is a great advocate for students, and her enthusiasm for connecting with her kids is apparent, and her ability to understand what they need is truly inspiring. Joyce Kilmer School will miss Rosemary's friendship in the halls, her funny and unique stories, but most of all, her brilliance in the classroom. There is no better way to recognize and honor Dr. Tenatilo than by ensuring that she knows that her commitment has changed the lives of so many students. We thank Rosemary for all that she has given to the students, faculty, and families of Maua. If you know Dr. Tenatilo, she transitioned from being a dentist to being a special education teacher to now being a retiree. So, Rosemary's JK family will miss her dearly, but we wish her well as she starts in her new journey. And lastly, and certainly not least, we have Mrs. Diane Drayman listed with Agenda Item 18D. She is announcing her retirement as an instructional paraprofessional from Lenape Meadows School. Mrs. Drayman has been a dedicated staff member of the Maua Public Schools for over 25 years, where she spent the majority of her career supporting and helping educate the students at Lenape Meadows. As a paraprofessional, Mrs. Drayman has assisted in the main office, as well as in a range of classroom settings. In her retirement, Diane will surely spend time with her grandchildren and her family, and we wish her all the happiness in the world in the years ahead. So, those are four wonderful people leaving our district. We wish them the best. I know that the board also approved several job fairs, right? So, with retirees necessitates the requirement to fill those vacancies. So, we're currently in the midst of doing all that. In fact, today was a day of Zoom interviews with a ton of candidates. So, we're currently working hard on getting those positions filled. We should have some appointments for the 2324 year, for school year, listed for recommendation to the board on our next board agenda. And our last piece, Mr. Gallo, if you could just hit the front bank of lights. I know that in previous meetings, we've been talking about IT EEA, right? We're really proud of this honor. IT EEA stands for International Technology and Engineering Educators Association. So, Maua High School has recently just been honored with this distinction. We shared a brief video with the board and the community at a previous board meeting. Just to reiterate, the STEM Center for Teaching and Learning recognizes outstanding schools for their commitment to providing a robust integrative STEM education program. Schools recognize and exemplify outstanding leadership in the field of STEM education. Recognized schools undergo a rigorous application process requiring detailed documentation to demonstrate a strong integrative STEM program. And as we are all aware, Maua High School has been honored and recognized with this distinction. A Maua High School representatives, inclusive of Mr. Pascal, building principal, as well as our STEM program teachers, will be attending the IT EEA conference in Minneapolis in April to participate in STEM-related professional development and be, of course, to formally accept their award. So, part of the requirement in being recognized is the organization asks Maua High School and every honoree to prepare a video that encapsulates our STEM programs. So, I want to thank our Maua High School students who participated in the assistance of the creation of this video, as well as Joe Charles, who is one of our technology teachers, who teaches our media program at Maua High School. So, this is what we will be showcasing at that event in Minneapolis. So this is what we will be showcasing at that event in Minneapolis. That was awesome. So yeah, so that's, I thought it was really important. We were debating on, you know, it's a board meeting before spring break, but I thought that it was really important to highlight this prior to our team going out to Minneapolis. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It was awesome. It's great to see the Q in action. Considering most of us have been here since we've had that.
But that's far as nine dollars we ever spent.
Four point six. All right, President's Report. Well, since I was thrown into this role tonight, it'll be a quick report. It's just awesome to see the spring's definitely sprung and all of our sports are kicking at the high school and elsewhere. All the campuses seem like they've come alive, so it's good to see. I did want to mention also the two plays at the Ridge as well as the high school. They were well attended and I heard good things. I unfortunately couldn't make it to one. But I heard really good things about them. It was great to see, you know, great productions. And then we just saw that, but just to see the robotics club out there doing their thing is pretty awesome. And it just, these kids are amazing. Honestly, it's something to behold, so. That's really all I got for tonight, so thank you. Board Committee Reports. What we got tonight for Board Committee Reports? Yep, student rep. Glad to have you.
Appreciate it. Good to be here. So we got a bunch of stuff, not any sort of like order or whatever, it's just like how it appears on the page. But throughout the month of March, the SGA has been doing a bunch of Mindful March activities. So starting late February through this whole month, we sent a Google form out and each student and faculty member had one compliment they could submit anonymously to someone. And so if you walk into the high school and the first display case, the whole display case is filled with a bunch of post-its with compliments about, you know, each other's peers. And so there's over about three hundred in there. Also with Mindful March, the grade level officers, each day last week, gave an announcement on the different competencies of SEO learning. So it was like responsible decision-making was one of them. And then so each day, the class officers would come in, give a little talk over the PA announcement during the morning announcements. Spring sports have begun. I think next week, throughout the week's spring break, is the first week of all the competitions. I think it was last week, the Rebel Club had their Kid Butts Day at the Ridge and at some of the other schools. Model UN had their first conference at the beginning of March at St. Peters. Robotics team came in second competition and, I'm sorry, their second competition, and they finished ninth out of thirty-one teams at Warren's Hills Regional and they're competing this weekend at Montgomery High School. Couple of student shout-outs. The Shock Menon won Dean's List semifinalist award and the last time a student from Maua won that award was in 2013. Indoor Winter Percussion had a competition at Fairlon and they improved by five points from a previous competition. Indoor Winter Card placed third at Monroe High School. The Shrek Musical, there were over three hundred attendees at each performance. The Jazz Ensemble had a competition last Saturday at Livingston High School and they received a silver rating out of bronze, silver and then gold, but they won their best trumpet section and Robin Sexton received Best Soulist Award on trumpet. Also in music, the Symphonic Band attended the NJ Music Education Association State Festival and received the gold rating and Mia Salzman won Best Soulist Award. Junior Formal was last week. A great night had by all. And then our middle school and high school FPS, so future problem-solving and community problem-solving teams, did very well in states and we have a good amount of teams going to participate in Nationals or Internationals, sorry, at Massachusetts at the beginning of June. And there's more information on all the team winners on the MHS School website. And then with the Decca Club, two students are going to compete in the International Career Development Conference in Florida for the first time since the club was created and those two students are Samantha Schessler and Jacqueline Huziak. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for having me on. A lot of great things happening. Any other Board Committees? Yeah, but please, go ahead.
Yeah, policy has ten policy and regulations on tonight's agenda for first reading. The first one is Policy forty-two and nineteen, Commercial Driver Controls Substances and Applicable Use Testing, was updated by eliminating telephone or fax machine for immediate notification. Policy and Regulation forty-two twenty, Employee Evaluation, was updated by deleting outdated language concerning the collection of evaluation data. Policy and Regulation forty-two thirty, Outside Activities, was revised to include language regarding full-time employees who engage in employment outside the district. Policy and Regulation forty-two thirty-three, Political Activities, only had minor language changes. Policy forty-two forty, Employee Training, was revised to include language that Superintendent Schools or Designees shall prepare the rules for employee training. Policy and Regulation forty-two eighty-one, Inappropriate Staff Conduct, was revised to add language to the regulation specifically assigning the Building Principal or District Affirmative Action Officer the task of investigating inappropriate staff conduct. Policy forty-two eighty-two, Use of Social Networking Sites by Staff Members, was revised to include language, making it clear that they are not speaking on behalf of their respective school or the district unless authorized to do so by the superintendent or designee. Policy forty-two eighty-three, Electronic Communications Between Support Staff Members and Students, and Regulation forty-three fifty-two, Sexual Harassment of Support Staff Members, Complaint Procedures, had only minor language changes. And lastly, Policy forty-three sixty, Support Staff Member Tenure, was revised by deleting the word janitors, leaving custodians in place and including power professionals.
Thank you very much. Just having you out, new relations.
Just a quick update tonight from around the community. Registration for incoming, re-registration for incoming fourth and ninth graders is happening now. The district asks that all registration documents be uploaded into the parent portal by this Friday, three thirty-one. Safety Town Camp is happening this summer. It is the camp for incoming kindergarteners. They are looking for student volunteers to help that camp. So anybody that is going into fifth and sixth grade is eligible and you should have received a one-call email from your Building Principal with a Google form to volunteer to be able to do that. It happens the week after school ends. Very fun. It's a really good way for our middle schoolers to get involved. The MMA is holding a Body Image Issues Webinar on April nineteenth at seven PM. This is appropriate for all ages, thirteen and older. It is happening online and you can register on their website. Registration is free, but they do ask that you register ahead of time. I also wanted to mention both plays that just wrapped up. I was able to attend both The Little Mermaid at the middle school and Shrek at the high school. Both really wonderful performances. Just wanted to mention that JK will be doing their play, The Brave Little Tigers of Transylvania, will be happening Friday, May fifth. So we're very much looking forward to that. This past week, there were seventy-nine Ramapo Ridge Middle School students inducted into the Junior National Honor Society, so we're very excited about that to see what they continue to do. A quick update from Access For All. Just continued conversations with the team there. They did mention that the more that we're partnering with students within our district who would be eligible for the programs that they do, they are seeing an increase in age, student-aged population coming to their events, which is extremely exciting. They have a really big event coming up in May. It's the annual softball game on May thirteenth. It's the Ramsey Challengers versus the Maua All-Stars happening at six PM. It's a big event. Both players from both towns will be there throwing out their first pitches. It's really cool. They haven't decided on which field it will be on, because field space is of the minimum this spring, but definitely keep an eye out for it. It's a really great event to go and attend. Also, just want to mention that spring sports for rec sports are all spring sporting at the moment. And although it is only March, almost April, fall, sport registrations will be opening soon. Very soon, Cheer will be opening right after spring break, so just want to put that plug in there. And then from Transportation, not a big update right now. Mr. Baker mentioned that in the next meeting, we'll be talking a little bit about the budget that pertains back to Transportation and doing more of a presentation there to talk about the work that we've been doing for the last year. So we're really looking forward to that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Nope, still got a couple more. No, I just have two updates. One, I just want to give a shout out to the Schools Foundation. They have sold out their fundraiser gala that is coming up on the thirteenth. So it's great to see that back in action after several years hiatus. And then as the Board of Education leaves on to the Town Council, I bring your attention to Seventeen U. This will be the Shared Service Agreement with the Township for the paving work that will be going on at our schools this summer. The bids have just, bids just went on the street today. Looking to award a nay and hopefully bring significant savings to the school district as well by pairing with the county itself. With that, we say no.
Well, you just said something that I was going to reference. I'm happy to see Seventeen U. It's always bewildered me in the past why something like this didn't occur. So I'm happy to see that it's going to happen now in the future. And my second comment is in reference to the evaluations of non-tenured staff. Mr. Gallo and I went in last week, came in last week to review the evaluations and we were both very impressed with the quality of the evaluations. They were extremely detailed. It was obvious that a lot of thought and time went into them. A clear picture was presented of the teacher and the teacher's lesson with the teacher's strengths pointed out along with helpful recommendations. And what specifically stood out to me is that in every subsequent evaluation, that evaluator made a point of checking to see if the teacher followed through on the recommendations made by the prior evaluator. And that was good to see that not only was the evaluator following through, but looking to see if the teacher was following through on those recommendations.
Well, I would just echo Mrs. Cohen's comments on the non-tenured reviews. The two of us have been doing it for a number of years now and the process is clearly ingrained into the Maua way of doing things. One of the things that I noticed this year was a little sort of an add-on, I think, was sort of the expression of the district vision in the evaluation process and in the feedback process to the teachers. And as Linda said, that follow-up from the prior evaluation into the next evaluation just helps our teachers, our non-tenured teachers continue to have success in our district. We can be awfully proud of the teachers who are in our district. Our non-tenured teachers are highly receptive to the recommendations that our administrators and supervisors give them. They are a growing, dynamic and enthusiastic group who are passionate about our children. And with that basic clay, we can do wonderful things in this district. So it's an enormous time-consuming effort that goes into this evaluation process. We only can scan a couple in the three or four hours that we're there, but it's clear that the district takes the process very seriously at all levels throughout the organization and it is really a very important tool in the way that our district has managed and leads our people. I think it sets the tone and the foundation for future extraordinary work prior to future. So I want to thank all the supervisors, administrators, the central staff that are involved, the principals. It's a tremendous amount of work. It's just again like part of our, our human resources processes are really sort of working very well. The fact that Dennis is already going to job fairs ahead of the curve. We're just going to be first online for the best teachers available in northern New Jersey. And as demonstra, I mean, I check Apple track every once in a while to see how many vacancies we have. Relative to other districts, we have a very, very low vacancy rate. Not to say that we're perfect. There are support positions that sometimes get jammed up a little bit, but for the most part, we have our frontline employees all the way down. And it's a tribute to the team here that runs the district. And they should be remembered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other Board of Directors' remarks?
All right.
Yes, please.
May I ask a couple of questions on Seventeen V before we get into the voting?
Sure.
I just wanted to understand just a little bit more about the ESS. This is really the first time I'm seeing ESS. So I wanted to ask, it's like they began last year, correct?
No, we've had this relationship with them for a large number of years. This is something that has been, we've even worked with them on. Like I said, these are students that have significant difficulty navigating emotionally in school as well as they get that support as well as academic support. That therapeutic support is also provided to the families to do that wraparound service. And like I said, these are students that the need exceeds the supports that our guidance counselors can provide within the school set.
Okay. And the other one was, so that service they provide, no other social workers, this is like a very specific service that ESS provides that other social workers or maybe a self-contained class would not provide in the school?
Yeah, with the self-contained class, that's really, a large majority of that is that instructional support. This is a very small, this is a small population of individuals. This is not a support for all students. This is a small population of students that really exceed that support that can be given by the guidance counselors.
Okay. And then the last question I have. So what would this budget increase for ESS intend on doing for the future? Is there any specific points that this budget increase would be going to for ESS to help out more with?
Can you explain the question?
So it says...
Oh, what's the purpose of the increase?
Yes.
Oh, so each year, there's an increase for this service, year over year. Since we started, there was going to be an increase. Actually, to kind of go into it even deeper, the company, the initial off, the initial quote was a four percent increase. Ms. Rizzo has a relationship with this organization because there are a number of students in which she supports who are benefited by this service. We met with them on two different occasions to talk about where breakage could be realized. And we were able to get it down from a four percent increase, which is what they're charging other districts, down to a two and a half percent increase, which really mirrors the increases that have happened since the inception of the program.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Your problem.
Just real quick, has the amount of students increased in that time, or has it been relatively stable?
No, they, they, they provide a cap on number of students in which they can service because what they also do is they, they provide, there are employees that are housed within our district, and then there's also regional employees that support cases as well, oversee the cases. So what they really cap, how many employees can service this many students, so it's an employee-to-case ratio. So that, that has been established, and that's been pretty consistent year over year.
All right, thank you. All right. Number sixteen, old business minutes. Do I get a motion to adopt the approved minutes of March eighth, two thousand twenty-three? Mr. Denise, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Mr. Weiger. Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Avanero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
All right. Number seventeen, new business, do I get a motion to approve, I mean, resolutions A through V? Ms. Cohen, seconded by Dr. Park.
Yes, except on seventeen A, I abstain from checks number one-one-zero-six-four-five and one-one-zero-seven-three-nine.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes, I'm going to abstain on seventeen M, and I'm going to abstain on seventeen V.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Navanero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Eighteen, new business personnel, do I get a motion to approve A through V? Mr. Gallin, seconded by Ms. Navanero.
Yes, except on seventeen, excuse me, eighteen F, I just want to recognize Darren Samuels. She's a dynamic educator in our district, and we wish her well in her future endeavors overseas. But she can't leave before she does camp convention, right?
She's going to wait until that's over.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Ms. Navanero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
All right, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw zero-one-six-seven. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and position within the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Can I please get a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallin, seconded by Mr. Hughes. We are open to the public.
Hi, good evening. My first board meeting, actually, and thank you. I have to say, I was on a townhouse board for a number of years, and it was packed, and people were like clamoring to get to the mic to, you know, we had to have police officers there, so this is a true testament of the work you all do. It's, there's nobody here, so that means everybody, everybody's happy when nobody's here, so, so bravo. I also have to commend everybody, just from the STEM program to the Mawa High School. I'm a twenty-year Mawa resident. I raised my children here. My daughter Mia is a sophomore at Mawa.
Just get your, just get your name for the.
Sure, I'm sorry, Jeff Lichtenheim.
Oh, yeah. Just for the record.
Yes, thank you. So, so all, all great stuff, and thank you for all the great work that you do. Just didn't come here just for the commendations. I do have, you know, an issue I want to raise, and it's really regarding the Mawa sports, Mawa High School athletics program. So before I came, wanted to make sure I had some, you know, some context and some analysis done, so just wanted to give you some statistics of, of the high school program. So boys' soccer, for this year, they finished two wins, fourteen losses. Football was two and seven. Girls' soccer was nine and eight. Boys' basketball was five and nineteen, and girls' basketball finished fourteen and fourteen. Three of those sports were actually lower year over year than the previous year, so I'm really here to address what I see as sort of this drift to low performance in our high school athletic program. I don't, you know, I'm not blaming anyone. I see it as kind of systemic. I did, in part of my analysis, I did reach out to the director of athletics, and I asked him, you know, why is it so difficult to identify and retain good coaches? His reply back to me, quote-unquote, was, "It's the parents," and I won't elaborate any further than that. It was an unfortunate comment that we had over a little bit of a contentious phone conversation. It was the only interaction, I really don't, don't know him, but it's not about, you know, one person. I think it's, you know, my daughter plays soccer, she plays basketball. I, I go to the games, it's funny, because you had Ed Kane, Ed Kane's father and me played football for Northern Highlands together. We were made it to the state championship. I know how important it is, and, and the fact that we take such pride in our academics, it's unfortunate that we have come to this point in our sports. Now, I know better than anybody, you know, the grades coming up to, you know, seventh, eighth, coming into high school, make their considerations for where they want to go. And I think what we're having a lot of is some of these student athletes, especially the good ones, choosing private schools, choosing club programs. I will tell you, my son decided to go to Don Bosco. That was his determination, because a lot of it was around the sports. So, you know, my, my question to all of you, my ask of you, is really around the commitment to, to changing the sports program, or at least, you know, analyzing it, moving ahead with it. I understand it's got to be the community, the parents, the school altogether, but, you know, I, I just see it continuing to deteriorate, and it should, it's not really, it shouldn't be indicative, the school. We're, you know, got the coolest name, we're the Thunderbirds. We got the coolest uniforms. We should invest and find those coaches. I will tell you, if you go and look at Ramapo High School's website, their coaching list is like Division One Wrestling, is their head wrestling coach, and all of these coaches are highlighted. If you go to Mawa's, we have nothing, like we, it's, it's their email addresses. You know, I, I think this is an area where we can work together. I, I represent a lot of parents. I was here because a lot of them voiced their concerns, they gave me a lot of information that I would like to share with you, but this is definitely not the forum to share a lot of that information. I think it would be good for you to know, really good context, from people that have had kids go through Mawa High School and graduated, people that have them here, and people that have children that are coming up, and my concern is I've spoken to a few of them, they're considering alternate options. And I know of a few that have actually gone and executed that. How do we retain these students here? I, I know it's also some things Ramsey does particularly, they'll have their varsity girls' program train, you know, and have a, have a day session with like a, you know, like a training session, and then bring them into the varsity game. I don't know if we're doing a good enough job of bringing these younger grades into, into the high school program, and I think the high school program's suffering. Do we have the right level of coaching? Do we, you know, are we getting the visibility to the sports programs? These are the things that I'd love to address, and what I'm just looking for is some commitment to have dialogue, because it's not going to be, it's not going to be instantaneous. It's going to take, it took a long time to get where we are. I think it's going to take a long time to, you know, or at least a while to get, get, you know, the program built up to where I think it should be.
Thank you very much. If you'd like.
There, there's a, a number of things that I definitely want to address with that. Let me start off with the, the strategy of retaining athletes from sixth grade through twelfth grade. At previous meetings, and I know you noted that, that you weren't at previous meetings, let me just repeat some things that I think are of value to the conversation. This year was the first year that we implemented a middle school sports program. I'm happy to report to you that in the two seasons that we've had so far, we have had our high school athletes come down and, and work with our high school, with our middle school students, which I think is really a point of pride. It's our first year doing it, so it's obviously going to be, there's going to be a growing process, but there is a commitment there to making sure that our students across the board feel connected to our school and have that, that interest and that commitment to staying with our school. That's number one. Number two, along the lines of the students going to other, other schools, that's a reality, to be quite honest with you, that every single Bergen County school faces when you start to look at the, you know, the recruitment and, and the opportunities of going to a Don Bosco and, and the other schools in the national notoriety that that comes with, that's, that's a, that's a major challenge that, to be quite honest with you, we're, I'm still racking my brain over how, how we can compete with something like that. But I think what's really important to share is I, I don't want us to, to lose sight of the massive, the success that the athletics have had in recent years. Our boys' high school team last year did go to states. Our, our softball team did go to states. Our track team, year over year, competes at a high level. I understand, and I'm not going to go, I'm not going to argue, that there, there are times at seasons, and as an athlete yourself, there, there's times there's seasons, that they have a tough season. But that, that's at no point for a lack of effort of our, of our young athletes that are working their, their tails off on the court, on the field. And I, I have to say, because I, I'm at the, the events, there's a major commitment from our coaches as well. That being said, I don't think the, the, the record isn't, is, is the main indicator of quality of a coach. I think we have wonderful coaches here. That being said, is there areas of growth everywhere? Sure, absolutely. I think in all programs, we're constantly assessing what we can do better. I don't think we're ever going to be static in our growth for, for teaching, for administrators, for district as a whole. So I can, I can definitely expla, tell you, I don't know about the conversation you had with the individual that you were referring to. I will definitely circle back and, and get more information. I don't think the conversation needs to close at all. I'm, I'm totally open to feedback from, from everyone, but I definitely don't want to leave this in a place of, of quality of individuals, because the effort and commitment across the board is commendable, to say the least. I just, I feel like that, that, that's of note.
Thank you. And, you know, I'm not, not disparaging the coaches, I, I just think that for some of them, when you look at the background and, and the previous, I mean, there's, there's sports where some of the coaches don't have, you know, don't have background, and where we could maybe retain a coach or get a coach where they do have, you know, college players. You do see this. You see it in, in Ramsey and Ramapo, just the quality of coaching. I, I will say that's an issue here. The quality of coaching is definitely an issue in Mawa High School.
I would only add, off of that specific topic, I, I would only add that, you know, I, I have been a strong proponent, and vocally as well, at the stable, of, for lack of a better word, calling recruitment. Going down into the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, talking to these kids, and bringing along guidance to talk to their parents about the education system, because there is no reason that any kid should go to a broken school. I understand his choice, I mean, I, I get it, but there's no reason, because we should have, we have some of the best education around. You can't beat that. And then from a sporting perspective, I, I hate to see those kids go, because they're promised things that they're never given at those schools. And, and it's sad, because they could be a, a, a strong caliber player, a strong athlete, and helping, you know, rate, rate, rising tide, all boats, like, we would benefit greatly from, from a strategy in that sense. And I know we've talked about it, and I know it's, and I know the commitment that, that this administration has, so, but I thank you for that, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. I am a dad with, you know, I've had someplace college football now, at Kennesawburg, so we came through the system, where they were in the playoff championship a couple of years ago. My daughter plays soccer, and I got one coming up, the ranks is going to be doing so as well, so I understand exactly where you're coming from. I had the same conversations with parents, or at least heard it. So, but I, I think there is a commitment here to, to, you know, again, I don't think records are always indicative, but, but I understand where you're coming from, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the middle school initiative that Dr. Dottore mentioned is really a future pipeline, obviously.
Yeah.
And it should be noted that the girls' soccer team in the fall, first year out, were championships in the league, so, and, and I went to a couple of games, and when you see the high school kids come down and cheer on their lower-class teammates, it's a, it's a magical thing. And I, I, I'm very optimistic about our future athletic program.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, and I think, you know, I see if my daughter goes to high school, she takes an hour to do her hair before she goes to the football game, and the whole point is, right, we just want the football team to be, you know, successful. It's not going to happen overnight, but just starting the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Any other members of the public? Seem none? Do I get a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. Gallin, seconded by Mr. Hughes. And with that, we are going to go into executive close session, where we wind up the meeting with. No, actually, thanks for that. Do I get a motion to go into executive close, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Denise. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.